A annual meeting, election of planning commission officers.
I make a motion, we keep the officers the same as last year.
Second.
We got a, a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. B subdivision plan for three lots, applicant Myron Mullins, property owner Trinity Riding Stables, tax map zero zero five, parcel zero two two point zero zero. Located seven five hundred White Queen Road, A two rural residential district, District Five, approximately eight point twenty-four acres. Mr. Mullins, is he here?
Mr. Chairman, they contacted us yesterday, asked that this be moved to the February meeting.
Okay. Do we have to vote on that?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. C subdivision plan for three lots, applicant Chris Rossar. Property owner Chester Franklin, tax map zero twenty-seven, parcel zero one seven point zero one. Located eight twenty-one Allen Shore Drive, R one suburban residential district, District Three, approximately two point three three acres. Mr. Rossar, is he here? Or a spokesman for him?
I'm Derek Jones, Mr. Engineer. Chris Rossar is out sick, uh, so I'm filling in for him tonight for Sterling.
Okay. You just go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, this is a, a property that probably everybody's at least familiar with. The, the parcel across the street is the large piece that's been there for quite some time, had equipment part on it for years. This is, um, a small remnant of that, that, um, I think was slated for residential on the original master plan that we, we didn't do. Um, so we basically just put together a plot to divide that into three lots for residential, single-family residential purposes.
You good, Jim?
Yes, sir.
No opposition? Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. D subdivision plan for five lots, applicant Deborah Rossi, property owner Geisler Family Holding, tax map zero five point B, group A, parcel zero two three point zero zero. Located Summit Hill Drive, A one agriculture forestry district, District Three. Ms. Rossi, how's that?
Yeah, I'm Deborah Rossi. I'm here, um, instead of being in Geisler, um, she's Geisler Holding, and I represented her through the original meeting, and now we're here for a final. And the, um, road has been completed, and I think we're just meeting with the approval of the final, um, uh, five lot subdivision.
Everything's in order. Uh, your all's plot probably says preliminary, that's the only thing they'll need to update, just show the final plot approval, but everything else is in order.
Right, and everything good?
Yes.
All right, motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
I'm gonna stay, cause I'm the next one.
Yes, okay. E subdivision plan for four lots, applicant property owner Deborah Rossi, tax map zero five one, parcel zero zero eight point zero zero. Located Summit Hill Drive, A two rural residential district, District Three. Good to go, Jim?
Everything's in order, again, uh, note, uh, preliminary to final flat. Course, Howard departments looked at the roads and things and approved those also.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There you are. F commercial site plan, applicant Roger Boring, property owner Reckless Property, tax map zero eight zero, parcel zero one three point zero one. Located one hundred Tarwater Road, M one general industrial district, District Three. Mr. Boring, is he here? Jim, has he contacted you?
Um, I don't see any contact on him.
What is it, Jim ain't no sign or nothing up over there?
It's just a site plan.
Well, it just looks like it's a road entrance. That's around that corner right there, is that all it is?
No, it's the, the dark building right there, they're adding a building on that same lot with the other.
Is it back there at the end of the parking lot?
Uh, yes, sir, I believe so.
I've been over there two or three times, and I couldn't find nothing else about it. They, did y'all put a sign up?
No, there's not a sign for it, it's just a site plan review.
They're gonna put a building there for the RVs and stuff to be installed right now?
No, it's on the same lot.
On the Tarwater roadside. At the end of that parking lot, right?
Yeah.
And I couldn't find out nothing about it.
It's, again, it's, um, I didn't review the, uh, site plan details filled in, as far as just adding the accessory building to the current business that's out there, as I understand.
Shall we put this one off to February also?
I think we need to, I think we need to find out something about it.
Any way.
With the table?
Yeah, we probably need to vote on that.
I make a motion, put it off.
Okay.
Second.
Got a, a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. G rezon request from A two to A three zoning, applicant property owner Doyle Chadwell, tax map zero fifty-six, parcel one seven eight point zero zero. Located nine thirty Corinth Church Road, A two rural residential district, District Four, approximately three point eighteen acres. Mr. Chadwell?
Yes.
What you got?
I'm just trying to see if I can split it up into two different flats. If I can manage a smaller one, I'm gonna try to sell the bigger one.
Jim, anything to?
Don't have anything to add, I don't know of any calls that we've received regarding his request. And I believe this is what he's looking to do with the property, as he has shown on the survey.
Yes.
Another house? Bringing another house?
No.
I was saying.
I was selling the home.
Okay.
My wife is going through some stuff, and she wants to try to get extra money, take care of her stuff before anything happens.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. H rezon request from A one to A three zoning, applicant Stephen Simmons, property owner Jonathan Mendoza, tax map zero thirty-six, parcels one twenty-three point zero zero and one twenty-three point zero one. Located fifty-eight oh five Uniti Road, A one agriculture forestry district, District Three. Mr. Simmons? Mr. Mendoza? Any contact on them?
We've not received any contact.
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Looks like we're gonna have a busy February.
Adding to the workload.
Rezon request from A two slash F one to A three slash F one zoning, applicant property owner Thomas Conig, tax map zero twenty-eight, parcel zero seventy-one point zero zero. Located twenty-two six oh six Beals Chapel Road, A two rural residential district. Ludway District, District Six, approximately one point five six acres only. Mr. Conig?
Thank you, uh, for hearing me out. Uh, in short, many of you know this property, this has the old car home, uh, the old seventeen ninety-two on it. Um, that's the more central lot that's there. The, the whole scale there's about eleven acres, it's a little bit short of, and, uh, at the tip, uh, it, it, where my wife and I reside, was three and a half or so acres already zoned, uh, for single dwelling, uh, A two. What we're, what we hope to do is to gift property east and west of that house to my two daughters. Unfortunately, neither of them want to assume ownership of the house built in seventeen ninety-two. So, um, I, and because the rules and bottlers are such to where there's only one house per lot, and I totally understand, um, if I gift the home to either of the two daughters, I, I know that they'll bulldoze the seventeen ninety-two home, uh, because they wanna build on, on that track. So, I'm trying to find a way whereby I will keep that house built in seventeen ninety-two. And what I'd like to do is get it rezoned to A three, sitting on, uh, and I'm sorry, that's a little small, but I think it's one point five four acres, uh, or, or similar. Um, all of the lots will have the necessary fifty-foot, uh, uh, roadway, uh, with a non-diminishing easement, et cetera. Uh, I've had three face-to-face conversations with Mr. Jenkins, I've had one phone call, recommended phone call with Adam Waller. They voiced their issues, concerns, all of which were then incorporated. Uh, one of our spoke with Richard Lehman, the surveyor, to try to make sure that all of the counties and cities' concerns were, were met. We respectfully ask a, a change in zoning for that old house down to, uh, A three, so that it, it doesn't get demolished.
Mr. Chairman, if, uh, Mr. Jenkins is in agreement with it, I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second, I'm familiar with the property and what's happening.
Any discussion? All in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Is that house on the historical register?
It is.
During that incident?
It, it can be, it is not. Um, in other words, it meets the criteria, but we've not gone through that process. And in short, um, I don't know if you've ever registered a, a historic landmark. For us, it's not worth it, but, but, as they say, the juice isn't worth the squeeze. Uh, they'll, they, I can, this committee, I don't know, will tell you if you can paint it, when you can paint it, what color you can paint it. I believe you have to keep it open to the public four days out of the year, and you have to take a, uh, advertisement out in the local paper indicating that, uh, the public is welcome for those four days to come and visit. Uh, it, it, it's, it's a bunch of work, it, it, it's practically not worth it.
Well, your daughter wouldn't tear it down.
True, true, that would be a way of making sure that, well, by the same token, she wouldn't build on that property either. So, um, but, thank you.
That may be the oldest house in Loudoun County.
Uh, I think it's the oldest house in Loudoun County, second oldest in the greater Knoxville area, second to the Blunt Mansion, built two years earlier.
Yeah, don't let them tear it down.
My goal. I'm, I'm here for another twenty years, I hope, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, rezon request from C two to R one zoning, applicant property owner Raymond Cooper. Tax map zero seven zero L, parcel zero one nine point zero zero. And zero one nine point zero one, located, located Shawhawee Avenue, General Commercial District, Dix, District Three. Uh, Mr. Cooper?
Yes, sir.
What you got?
Well, actually, in nineteen eighty-six, I purchased that property, and I lived there until, uh, two thousand and five. And also during that time, we divided the railroad property with school and my community. So I took, I took the railroad property, the city could alter it. So therefore, they gave me seventy-five foot of ground for it. Uh, seventy or seventy-five, I believe it was seventy-five. The problem is, the house was built in the fifties, uh, it's really bad shape. I just wanted to demolish and, and be able to build a small house back. Maybe clean it up, and, but, when I come to get a demolition permit, they told me if I took the house down since it was on C two, which I didn't realize it was C two, because I always thought it was residential, uh, that I could not build back. So I'm just asking to be able to clean it up and be able to build something back. Cause once I tear it down and clean it up, if it's C two, I don't really see that it would value me, because I'm not gonna build anything back like a retail store or a business. And also, also signed up for SUGAR, which is supposed to come through in the spring. So, that's what I'm asking, to be rezoned to R one.
Jim?
Is correct, he's in the city, bring back the bill, their city council voted on this, but he wants to use it in residential manner, so that's the, what he'll need to do that.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, rezon request, uh, from A one to R two zoning, applicant Turner Holmes, property owner Lexon Ranch LLC. Tax map zero forty-four, parcels zero six one point twenty-eight, zero six one point twenty-nine, zero six one point thirty. Located seven hundred Friendsville Road, A one agriculture forestry district, District Three, approximately seventeen point four acres. From Turner Holmes.
Yeah, Sean Rodriguez with Turner Homes, uh, Chris Collier with, uh, our jury, he's our engineer. I brought a, a little concept, just to kind of get an idea, basically, we purchased this property. It shows Lexon Ranch, but we've already bought the property. It's Turner Development Fund that owns it now. We're looking to take it from agricultural to residential. Uh, twenty-six lots is, uh, the design that we've got, and we're looking to rezon this to R two.
Is there utility water there?
Yes.
Which, uh, the three utilities furnishes it?
Water is.
Grateful South Water?
Water's Tass, Silver Spring.
Yeah, from Tasses.
Tass or Pases?
Water on that.
They're complying on all fronts.
Is that on the corner?
Right, corner, three twenty-one Friendsville.
So they blow pressure up on the highway and the water?
Where they fill there?
Yeah.
Is it right on the corner, nine five and Friendsville?
Parcels, yeah.
Well, how come you're going to R two instead of R one?
They're mostly for, it's, keeping kind of a buffer and keeping the lots, so the way they put the fill in there to make their work, work easier, it's easier to keep those lots closer to those duplexes on the bottom. If you start getting into the R one, the lot width gets so bigger, so instead of having all that common area, leaving a lot of native buffer around the edge, is you have to extend them out towards that highway.
You say, you say duplexes?
No, 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 the, there's duplexes on the south side, they're, uh, we're no single family, but to keep the, from your, keep that buffer away from the highway, you would have to shut everything out. So the property lends itself to wanting to be a little more dense on the lower side away from the highway. So we're just trying to keep that buffer away from the highway.
Are you gonna do, I mean, twenty, uh, seventeen acres with, you said twenty-six units on it?
Yeah.
Are you gonna cluster the house, or is it one house?
It's a single family.
Yeah, sorry.
And where do you plan on exiting the property, where do you plan on making the exit from the property?
Friendsville Road. So this is Friendsville Road, this would be the entrance, this is how we.
That's, that's not a good road, Greg, that is a very small road.
Well, yeah, we fully accept that, right, for this.
What plans do you have for Friendsville Road between the duplexes of three twenty-one? You're gonna have to do something to that little narrow strip of road.
Where does that come in, Jim, on the new thing? How wide's that road?
So, so, they will have to, county commission should be, if they approve our new recommendation, be February third, they would have to improve the road if it doesn't currently meet down to their subdivision. They are on this side of the bridge.
Right.
To their entrance. But they would have to at least have the twenty-foot wide road, white line to white line, measured white line to white line, all the way down to the entrance of the subdivision.
Why would you not? It's right there on three twenty-one, why would you not use three twenty-one?
No, it's not on the corner, Bill, I thought it was, it's, it's.
They are doing all three lots.
I know, are you doing all three of them?
Yeah, but the three twenty-one entrance would be.
Why have you got that one colored?
Well, cause that's all, all we can color.
I thought, I thought it was out to the corner, you got that one colored, and I thought it was all right there.
I did too.
Yes, sir.
No, that's all three.
Before, so maybe I'm, before they close.
Stand up and, uh, introduce yourself.
We need to know who you are and.
My name's Jeff Franklin, and I live on Friendsville Road. And before you close all this discussion and everything, I'd like to present something to you.
Go ahead.
That they may not have thought about, being a resident on that road, so whenever they're finished, I'd like to do my two cents worth of.
Go ahead. Now, yeah, go ahead.
I know there's more than, uh, like I said, my name's Jeff Franklin, and I live up on the further end of Friendsville Road, up near the quarry. Y'all might remember me from way back when, when we went over that issue. Anyway, the people on that road, a lot of them have a concern, if this does go through, which it probably would, about the amount of traffic, truck traffic, from the quarry to this area right here. Now, they're gonna require a lot of rock, a lot of sand, and all these trucks, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, from keeping them coming down Friendsville Road, which is only a sixteen-foot road, sixteen-foot wide road, whereas they can go ninety-five to three twenty-one, take a right toward Marable, and this property is right down there. It's three point six miles from the quarry, going ninety-five, three twenty-one area, three point six miles. It's two point four miles from the quarry going down Friendsville Road. Not much difference, mile and two tenths is the difference. You've got a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, you've got signage, ten ton limit. We're just concerned if and when this goes through, can there be anything done to keep all that truck traffic, vehicle traffic, uh, supply traffic, carrying and whatever up Friendsville Road? There's kids there, people ride horses, people pop babies, stroll babies down through there. Is there anything anybody can do to keep all that construction traffic, cement trucks from Flamicon, uh, rock trucks from the quarry, asphalt, from the asphalt plant? We envision just seeing an enormous amount of traffic coming down that small sixteen-foot road, curvy, narrow, a lot of driveways in it.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know why any of those people would wanna go any other way except three twenty-one.
Yeah, we don't use, we don't use.
But I agree with what he's saying, but I thought that'd be something Pickle would have to have.
What I think, what I'd be gonna be saying.
That's something Billy Pickle would have to have, I think.
They're all pulling out the hogs and driving trucks. I don't know, everything's gonna be all three turn on. That's a really short.
I've lived there, I've lived there thirty-eight years.
Are there plans to widen Friendsville Road?
Not that I know of.
I don't even know if two trucks can pass.
There, well, you've got school buses, I was coming up there tonight to come to this meeting in a pickup truck. You cannot see at certain times after two, three PM, you cannot see the road in front of the sun. And I'm just in a little pickup truck.
I'm, I'm like Bill, why are you not exiting on ninety-five, or on three twenty-one?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're not using Friendsville Road, we're going three twenty-one.
You said you was gonna exit on Friendsville.
So, so the reason is, is you, one, it's a safety, you're too close to the Friendsville interchange. Uh, the second one is, is there's not a median cut, um, where the entrance would have to be, so it'd be a right-in, right-out only of that whole entire development. Um, so what would end up happening is you're gonna have people that's not gonna wanna turn right and go all the way down to a U-turn, they're gonna cut straight across to that other median cut, and it's gonna be.
The, the next left is what, uh, a couple hundred yards there.
Have you, have you talked to T-Dot?
Yeah, T-Dot will, just from previous experience, I haven't found this one particularly, but previous experience, they will not let us do a curb cut that close to that interchange. It's a, it's a safety thing on that, especially on that divided highway.
You're talking about closer to Friendsville Road?
Yeah, so the only place you could get it, cause there's, there's buffers and stream buffers on the left side, top left. So you can't access there, so the, the only place we could access is pretty much smack dab in the middle of it, and that's already in portion of that turn line, T-Dot won't let us connect to that.
Well, we, I, I, that's, it's, I'm not real excited about the, the idea of turning that traffic on to Friendsville Road.
I'm not either. We have to use that road to get out there.
It will be, it will be.
Once you, once you cross the creek, from, from three twenty-one to your property right there, it's the best part of the road there. I guess T-Dot did that when they did the backfield, build that lot, but once you get to the creek, those roads, I mean, it's, you know, the people living at subdivision, I, I don't know where they would, which way they would go, but.
You have to pull off the road to let another car pass.
But again, we're, we will be improving Friendsville Road from the highway to past the intersection. So, nothing from past this, where our intersection is now here. You know, if you're looking at this, the, essentially, it's looking like that. So, three twenty-one's up here, everything would be improved to here, everything past that going south on that plan would not change from existing conditions.
But I, I.
So being it's gonna make everything better, in that, for that stretch.
I'll stand down, and we're kinda getting away from what I was wanting to talk about, is just the chance of all this high truck volume traffic, about sixteen-foot wide.
I agree with what you're saying.
So what, I mean, if it starts to happen.
That's where the buses come.
Well, that's, we can do nothing about that.
Okay.
That's Billy Pickle and the Sheriff's Department's gonna handle that, and I think Pickle will handle that, just post it, no truck traffic.
I talked to him about another issue of dump trucks up and down the road, and he said those are signs. And I told him, I said, you've got a, a weight limit sign out there, you've got a speed limit sign, and there's drivers on these dump trucks, they're gonna make either one of them. He says, well, those are just up for suggestion. Uh, that's the answer I got. They couldn't enforce them, they were just there to suggest that you don't go in there. So anyway, uh, if you can't do anything about it, that's what I needed to know, what I wanted to know, but I just wanted to express my concern, and a lot of the other citizens in the area have that same concern.
I agree with you, if they start building in there, you know which way they're gonna come.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of.
I agree.
May see you later. Thank you for your time. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
The best to you.
Just a thought, could you not put on your plans that the trucks cannot be, will not access this property from Friendsville Road?
We could put a note on there, uh, you start getting the means and methods, you start getting into legal, how legal binding that is, I don't know, but I mean, we could definitely, and we could talk to the contractor and say, hey, I mean, we can definitely.
Contractor has to buy into your plans, and you're not telling him he can't access the property, you're just telling him he can't come to Friendsville Road.
Run three twenty-one because it's faster.
And you're saying you have a concrete plant within two miles of your building site, and a rock quarry plant to, to deliver rock for driveways, gravels, footers, and you're gonna get all that out of Knoxville, instead of going to that plant that's two miles away?
The companies we use, they're out of Knoxville, Clayburn Hall is one of the biggest.
They're parked out there at the quarry.
Yeah.
They're parked out there at the quarry.
I didn't even know the quarry was there, so all of our sites, we build a lot in the county, we've got five developments in the county.
That's fine, it's, it's senseless to me, to haul something in from Knoxville when you're two miles away from it on our road. I'd like something in writing if you all could do it.
If the quarry is there, and they're using that road currently, they're, that's.
They use us, they've been good so far, they've been real good about it, uh, and the asphalt plant and the concrete truck. We've had six or seven major wrecks of rock trucks on Highway ninety-five between three twenty-one and Big Hill Road where the quarry is. I mean, full loaded dump trucks going off the side of ninety-five in residential areas since that quarry has expanded. I mean, it's dangerous. The drivers, if they would stay on their lines over, it would help a lot. But you've got these drivers out there, concrete drivers, rock drivers, coming over on the white, or on the yellow lines, and how many wrecks have been, have you seen dump trucks turned over? You can go out there and count the gravel, miles where they, where they wrecked. So it's dangerous on a state highway. Uh, it's, safety is, is a big concern of ours, and plus noise, brake brakes, you can hear brake brakes coming down from ninety-five to the quarry. Nobody can do anything about that, they can't put a sign up, you know, like they do other places.
This project being adjacent to the Highway three twenty-one, it's not three quarters of the way down Friendsville Road, it's, it sits right next to three twenty-one, which is a major highway, major bypass.
Let's make sure we're right then, if we approve this.
Yes, sir.
That will fall under the new county commission guidelines.
It will.
Okay.
Because it's still gotta go through county commission for approval.
So it'll be after.
It'll be on the same day there, that. It'll be on the same day there, assuming they adopt that reg, it'll be on the same day that it's rezoned, that there'll be a new reg in place, and they won't have to submit it to them. And y'all could even make that caveat. Well, I mean, you're recommending rezoning, if you recommend rezoning, you might, uh, do as such with it. Also, the access road being brought into the new recommended county standard of road access.
Or if they don't approve?
If they don't approve it, it won't matter.
No, I mean, they're lining up the road.
If they don't line the road, they're gonna get a final plat or preliminary plat.
No, I'm not saying that. If county commission, the craziest thing they've done.
We've got bigger problems.
Yeah, I think everybody's.
So, so y'all can approve it, then maybe county commission can put that caveat on there, but.
The engineer's been drawing in there that's widening to us anyway.
Anybody else here that's got anything going?
I've got more questions than I've got anything else at this point.
Ask them.
I, you know, I said, I don't like the idea of dumping the traffic onto Friendsville Road at all. I said, I'd like a little more information exactly what this is gonna look like. You know, I don't want them to get, to spend a lot of money on doing stuff, but I said, seventeen acres and twenty-six houses, I'd kinda like to see all that's laid out.
I mean, this is the design. We had it drawn up to see if anybody had any questions, but this is Friendsville Road. This is three-twenty-one.
Yeah.
So the entrance would be here, those duplexes are right here. So you're gonna turn on, we're gonna widen this section, and turn into the entrance. These are all one-half acre. Uh, they're fifteen thousand.
Well, I heard the question a minute ago, were you gonna ask for cluster? One of y'all said no. So if you're, if you're not asking for cluster, you're not gonna have fifteen thousand square foot lot. If you're asking for cluster, that's why you need the R-two. But the original question was, if you're just doing half-acre lots.
Yeah, we are asking.
I interpreted asking for clusters mean we're doing duplexes. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That, that was gonna have a question, why didn't you just live at R-one, because we get into a situation.
Cluster is detached fifteen thousand.
We will get into the question on our side. I'm Siriam Ban Shaver, Wolf County Commissioner, Bill Satafield, Gary Whitfield, Commissioner. The, once we start this R-two rezoning, then you have property right adjacent to you and all up and down, will we then be legally required or have a, another applicant have a legal stand to say, you gave them an R-two, you have to give us an R-two? And that changes a lot of things from R-one to R-two. For you, for us, that's our high de, as high as you're gonna get allowed in county high-density rezon for multi-families and stuff like that, so, uh, for me, that's gonna be my question, how, how does this impact going forward on other properties in the same general area?
What's all those houses back out Friendsville Road, Jim? Where are they zoned?
They were, uh, I'm not sure what they're zoned, but they were, uh, probably, they may be eight-two. They may be on one-acre lots.
They're not, I think.
They were built off the shared driveways.
They're not on one acre.
Then are where those condominiums and stuff was, that's not on one-acre lots. They're not condominiums, but where are they called?
The duplexes. Uh, he's on R-one.
And them houses down through there, they're not on one-acre lots, I would do. Running out to Purple Road down through there.
Oh, you got a snapshot.
No. I'd have to log it up. Mr. Brooks, we can do that, though. With all those new houses going in that you propose, are they gonna put a street light, a red light out there on three-twenty-one?
So I'm assuming you're projecting that these houses will be bought by families?
Yes. They'll be in that five hundred thousand price point.
Is that what he's talking about, where?
Yeah, down, runs on over the hill there from Bob Talismore and down through there where they've held.
It's, uh, one point eight acres for that tract there.
How much?
One point.
How many houses is that? Is it R-one, is it show the zoning?
Uh, it's, yeah, the second one.
They're pretty good-sized lots, all those houses out there.
What are those? What are all those?
Ain't one acre lot type.
A-one.
They are A-one?
Yeah, so they all had to be over acre lots down there.
So we're throwing that R-two right in the middle of everything, A-one wants to cross the road, is that, is that some R, or is it C-two over at that boat point?
The, the R-one, I mean, just for what it's worth, the R-one near this property is directly behind it, uh, where the duplexes are right here. Those properties right there are, are one, if I'm not mistaken.
They are.
It's R-wood houses.
Well, there's no R-two around it.
We don't have any R-two.
So the R-two allows less than half-acre lots?
The, the R-two is where you can use the cluster option of development.
What exactly does that mean?
So the cluster option of development, you take the overall land area, you reduce it by twenty-five percent, and that's used for the construction stuff, okay? Then you take the sum of that number and you divide it by the lot density, which is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty square feet. All right, and that tells you the number of lots you can have in that development, which is, the R-one is a twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty square foot lot also, okay? And from there, what it does, it says, okay, I can have twenty-six lots, but I can reduce my lots to fifteen thousand square foot minimums. I don't increase the number of houses, but my lot sizes can be reduced, which allows you to have more open space, more buffering, it allows a little different arrangement and concept of your development. Uh, it adjusts some setbacks from where it's required to be thirty in the R-one, it's allowed to be twenty-five on the front. In the R-two, it allows the, uh, rear yards, uh, I think there's a roadway in the rear yard from maybe twenty-five to, to twenty feet in the rear yard. So it does allow a smaller lot, but not necessarily more houses.
Just gives you a little more flexibility in what you can do with the lot.
Well, does R-two, does R-two require sewer?
It does.
Is there sewer over there?
So there's sewer and water.
Sewer and water, yes.
Well, how many, if you went R-one, how many lots would it cut them?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
None.
No, it's gonna be the same number of lots.
Yeah, it'd be the same number of lots.
They can have half-acre lots, they can have half-acre lots in R-one.
I understand that, but I thought they had to have so much open space.
They don't. So, and I don't know if y'all, and I'm just trying to get a question answered, I don't know if y'all concepted this out, just doing it as, as R-one.
We roughly looked at it, so essentially all your open space and all your.
You think you can still do the twenty-six lots, but you alleviate, but you take away all the.
Take away, take away all your open space.
And all your other amenities space.
It just makes for a better product for Mulledale.
Are you gonna have underground utilities?
Yes.
Underground power?
Yes, absolutely. We felt like bringing the concept would give you an idea, so we spent a little bit more time trying to put together what the concept was gonna be versus just saying, hey, we want R-two. So we put a lot of effort into figuring out how it best works for the community, for us, for the homeowners that are gonna be living there. I think having the open space helps the people, you know, it just makes for a better community. If we're having to, if we drop down to R-one and we're pushing everything out, it takes away some of that open space. Typically, we like to do walking trails, we like to give the homeowners a little bit more ownership of the project, so. I like the new R-two, but I think it fits.
I'm just thinking about your Friendsville, Capcom Friendsville Road, even if you do exit that, those houses on the Friendsville Road, they still, there's, there's only one, they can turn right and go to God's Country, or turn left on the three-twenty-one. I don't have a say, you're, you're saying T-Dot won't let you put an outlet on that property that close to Friendsville Road?
It's like seventy-five dollars, so it's, based on the speed limit, you have to be, based on the speed limit, you gotta be a certain distance from that interchange, and we can't beat that per T-Dot regulations currently.
The thing about that, if you turn right out of their subdivision, you go out to Friendsville Road, turn left on Purple, and go where Hitman Road West, and turn right and come through, but your house.
You can do that, if you want to go to Maryville.
That's where you get into the four-foot lane.
Yeah, anything, anything past the creek down there, Forest Creek, is gonna be dangerous to navigate on.
And if the top, if the fox, side farm ain't got it backed up, you might get across it.
We, we heard anything about, well, we'll talk about that later.
You don't wanna go that way.
Well, the other thing about that piece of property, there's not, it's not fit for anything else but a house or a business, 'cause it's all field dirt from three-twenty-one. They picked that spot.
That was a home there.
Yeah, T-Dot filled all that in, seventeen, over seventeen acres of field dirt and rock and whatever, and just made that. It's not fit to farm or anything else. So, you know, it, and it does have sewer, and I guess has water in it, I'm just, I'm like a lot of the neighborhoods in our county that our roads have not kept up with the times. We've got a lot of neighborhood, like, I live what, two and a half miles from that, maybe, just before I live, and I said, I, I pray all the way from three-twenty-one home every night, it is such a, it's such a dangerous road. And we do have truckers that will come down Big Hill on that side and turn left on the Meadow instead of going out, uh, ninety-five and three-twenty-one. And, and we've had Dillons, we've had trucks that destroyed, what was the name of the road that we paid for, or that they paid for, Van?
Davis Lane.
What?
Davis Lane.
Davis Lane, that was what, five hundred and seven thousand?
Seven hundred and twenty-four thousand.
So almost a million, though. Trucks destroyed the road. And I'm not so much worried about the road as I am, I, I would hope to God that they'd have more sense and to try to navigate anywhere else but on three-twenty-one on, on.
I'm with you, I don't see why someone's using Friendsville Road, we're just using a small portion.
Quick, Greg, make more runs, make more money. How does this plan, Jim, with that, that we had the lawsuit, what did he want? What did they want exactly?
They were trying to rezon R-one PUD, back when we had PUDs, so you know, you had two and a half units per acre. Uh, lot more gets it.
Okay, a couple of months ago, we had a rezon request on three-twenty-one, on the other side of three-twenty-one, was he wanting R-one or R-two?
He was wanting R-one.
And we denied it.
Yeah. Right there, right there, close to the dollar store.
It was a larger track. It was a larger track.
Yeah, I believe that, he, he didn't know exactly what he was gonna do.
He just wanted where he could rezon it to sell it. He didn't have no site plan.
Correct, they didn't have any idea what exactly was gonna happen.
Yeah, I think we got a pretty good idea of what we're gonna do with it. I think it's gonna be a great project. Been a business since nineteen seventy, a family-owned company, we're not out of stagers or.
Is there a problem with R-two, Jim?
I apologize.
Is there a problem with R-two in the area?
It, it has everything it needs to be rezoned to R-two.
But I mean, we ain't gonna get into spot zoning or nothing.
No, this is a new zoning district, so I do not think it's spot zoning.
I'll make a motion that we do it, that we rezoned R-two with the, whatever you wanna call it, that county commission approves the new subdivision flats with the width of the road. And that's my motion, and we'll turn it to county commission, let them make a decision.
Twenty-six lots on seventeen acres, that's what we're voting on.
Rezoned R-two.
They will be back if the rezoning goes through to get the special exception for a cluster option. And flat, right? If, I'd have to re, refresh my memory, but I believe the cluster option is in the R-two, it also requires a special exception, and then they'll be back for a preliminary plat, and we'll see all the final concept layout and road improvements and all that at that point in time.
Will those road improvements start before they start construction, or, that's kinda vague?
They'll be completed before they start construction.
Before they pass it, they're gonna complete it.
I don't wanna mislead. I believe the way the reg, regulation is written, it has to be all completed before they can receive final plat approval.
Well, that part of Friendsville Road from where you turn in to the creek, and the creek is.
The creek's right, the condominiums is right on the other side of the creek.
It's a pretty good, it's, it's not, it's not bad, 'cause, you know, once you get to the creek, it's when it goes.
Do you have?
Really there. You know, it's the, the state of Tennessee kinda.
It's got a, they build a buffer.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's nice and wide and so forth if you turn left. If you turn right, if, once you get to creek, then you're, as long as you're the car, you're pretty good. Semi, or dump trucks and stuff wouldn't be, but.
Do you, do you have any plats or drawings of T, of T-Dot, how they're gonna re, work that intersection of Friendsville Road, three-twenty-one? You have any idea what they're gonna do, actually do there?
T-Dot's not gonna do anything.
That's the narrow part from the creek to three-twenty-one.
These guys have to do it.
Oh, no, we ain't gonna do it.
No, they don't. They have to, to county standards.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that's a detailed design.
We have not done that.
That'll, that'll have to be twenty foot from Flatland to Purple.
Right. That probably up through there is twenty.
It's not, it's, it's, it's not far from it. I said, that's these part in, it's right.
We've got a second, okay? We've got a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify the saying, aye, aye, opposed never. As have it.
L, rezon request from A-two to C-F-D, advocate Roman Catholic Diocese of Knoxville, property owner Sally Sefton, trustee, text map zero-one-seven, parcel zero-fifty-five, four-zero-four. Located North Shore Drive, A-two, rural residential district, District Six, approximately ten point nine acres.
Sorry, go ahead.
Chairman, I'm Sean Smith, I'm the chancellor, uh, for the Diocese of Knoxville, and, um, we have the blessing of, of the Sefton family wanting to donate, uh, the ten point nine acres, this particular spot, so that we can finally have a cemetery, uh, in, uh, Loudoun County, West Knoxville, and, I just must say, I'm grateful to Jim and Jeannie, they've been both helpful, I'm a rookie at this, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
I'm intimately familiar with this property and, and the process that they've gone through, and Mr. Sefton's desire to want to contribute this, so I'll make a motion to approve.
It's, it's a empty ten point nine acre field now?
Uh, what it was, uh, Mr. Napier, was a nursery, you know, for plant and trees, is what it had been used for, but that's been closed down, and so, uh, it's basically ten point nine acres, and there's a, a little building sort of in the, you, you can see.
So that's not the church in there? That's not the church?
No, no, no. But we would have offices in there as well as place to park, you know. But we would have offices down there and as well as place the park, you know, the tractor that would, uh, dig the. And, and there's like, there's actually a kitchen in there, we could have little, like, receptions after a burial, uh, you know, cookies or whatever.
Is this where the, is this where the nursery was with the red building?
Yes, it sure is. And you know, the, the road comes in, it goes around, but both the entrance and the exit can go right to North Shore. And, and I know when we get to the, the plan, I, I brought this reality, but I think you, you have it, uh, you know, be all paid, it'll be just a nice peaceful cemetery. And it's, it's not just for Catholics, the way I'm designing it, it's, the, the, the goal is, we're gonna call it Holy Cross Cemetery, and you know, a lot of people now, they, they're cremated and they're interred and so forth, and there's so many of, of the faithful that want to be buried. We have simply ran out of space a long time ago for our cemetery in Knoxville.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
We, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I was nay.
Thank you very much.
Four, county commission action on planning commission recommendations.
County commission did not have a meeting, so we don't know any results at this time.
Five, codes department building activity summary for December.
I don't have anything approved at the update.
Any additional comments from the public? Update from the planning department?
Ms. Berkfield just stated that we, uh, we went, we, we need to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Thank you all, thank you. That's all we have, that's all we got. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
If I sit and watch, maybe.
I want a fair. All right, let's go talk, go outside, we're fixing to start another meeting. Call Loudoun County Board is on in order, roll call.
Brad Bryan, Jim Brooks.
Here.
John Napier. Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
If you're gonna talk about anything in this meeting, you need to stand up, raise your right hand, and repeat after me.
Oh, I guess I'm talking to this, I'm looking for a variance.
If you're, if you're gonna look for a variance, y'all got anything?
Variants.
Stand up, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you may give and the cause is now pending before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yeah, I do.
Thank you. Everybody read the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Plan to gin die. Annual meeting board, we got elected officer.
Make a motion, all officer states say.
Second.
Round any beer.
He got voted in.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Always likewise. B, variance request for a ten foot front yard setback to be able to construct porch on new mobile home, Africa property owner William Paget. Tax map zero six seven, parcel zero eight four point zero, located six hundred Caldwell Road, A one agriculture, forestry district, district four. What you got?
Sir, so, bought this property for Floyd Lawson, he passed, before he passed away, there was an existing home there, a porch. I took the old double wide out, in probably in the eighties, there was a roof built over that double wide with a porch, with a concrete slab, with a roof over it. The porch is still there right now, I just got rid of the home, I wanna put a new home in there and then redo the porch and attach it to the new home, is what I wanna do.
Where's the violation?
I'm sorry, setback.
It's in violation of setbacks, and there's a neighboring property just down from his that a couple of months ago, we had to issue the same variance. You got rear slope issues, I mean, the, the back of that lot.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna add on the porch, you're just wanting.
Yeah, yeah, I'm wanting to use the existing porch.
It's in violation, existing porch is in violation.
Yeah, it's been there since probably the eighties, it was Mr. Blankenship's old house, I don't know if you ever knew Mr. Blankenship at Reddon Caldwell Road.
What, what is there is in violation essentially, and wants to leave it in place.
Move to approve.
He's not grandfathered in, is he?
Yeah.
Changing houses from a.
Got a motion.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, anybody in the opposition? All in favor say aye.
Uh.
Always likewise. Uh, C, variance request for a ten foot yard setback to be able to set new mobile home, Africa property owner Tyler McGee, tax map zero one zero, parcel zero zero eight point zero zero, located three six six zero Weaver Street Road, A two rural residential district, district five. What you got?
Good evening, my name's Brian Spiller, I'm here on behalf of Hellmark Construction, which is a division of Clayton Homes, and currently we've got, um, a single wide, which we will remove, there is a side built garage in the back. The home is going in as a thirty-two wide, so we will encroach in the front without a variance. And we do not want to demo the garage, it's side built, it's a major block garage, it has a water supply, electric supply. Um, and the lot, based off the pography in the rear, uh, and the amount of rock in the soil, we're, we're, we've kinda got what we've got. We can't really go any clear anything in the rear. Um, and so based off the size of the home and where we're at, with forty foot, we're asking for thirty foot. Essentially, probably won't use all the ten feet, but it doesn't hurt to ask for a couple of extra in just the case.
All right, Jim.
So he just for really replacing.
He is replacing.
Yeah, he can't just get it back far enough.
A little wider, a little wider.
Yes, sir, so that one is approximately seventeen, the one we're putting in is a thirty-two.
Okay.
Um, and we will skew a little bit, so I know that math doesn't really match, but we will skew it a little bit, so realistically, based off what we've measured, uh, we will dig ten feet at the most, uh, in order to make it work.
And the hardships, the rock and the top of.
Well, and, and talking to Mr. Bunch, he put out the side, you know, signage, he says, you know, really, the back of the lot is not really buildable. Then it presents a accessory structure in the front yard at that point also.
Right, okay.
Have you had your property surveyed, so you know your side lines, you know your property lines fixed?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Second, motion and a second, anybody got any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Always likewise.
Good evening, thank you all.
B, administrative review for letter of violation, Africa property owner Tracy Winters, tax map zero three nine, parcel zero seven one point zero zero, located eighteen sixty-six Cross Breck Church Road, A one agriculture, forestry district, district four. She ain't here, you got our authority, Jim, to throw the book at her.
Thank you.
What is it?
Yeah, I believe this is one that Holly had sent a letter, that was living in a camper and then come in and stated they'd been out there about three and a half years, somebody living in it, and they wanted to appeal.
They didn't show her, we need to table her, tell her to move.
We don't need to table it, it's administrative review, basically all they can do is come in and discuss that we're interpreting the regulations improperly, so. You can't live in a camper.
What do you want us to do?
You need to vote on it, to remove it?
If you all wanna do anything, you can, uh, vote up, hold, uh, and make a proper revision of the regulations.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Always likewise, you got anything else, anybody else got anything, Van, you talked through the whole meet, you got anything else to say?
I don't have time.
Like, motion to adjourn.
Got a motion, done adjourn, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye, we adjourn.